We will now call the order to adjutant Commissioner Ford. We have some public comments this morning. Detective Carl Marks.
Yes, sir.
And we'll make some comments.
Uh, yes, sir.
Do you want me to do it there or at the party? Whichever one of you feel comfortable with.
Welcome, Your Honor and Commissioners. Thank you. Uh, I think there's a few things that needs to be brought to your attention concerning the 82 project between Boston and Decatur. I'm the contractor that is putting in the driveways from Malta to Decatur. We have had great many issues and challenges out there. I'm gonna try to stay on point. I'm not a very eloquent speaker, so please bear with me. In July, we faced the challenges of using a different sand source because of the rains that we had in April and May. They were unprecedented. It was a lot of water. So, to my understanding, we were told to use a substandard sand and with consent of the engineer and all that goes with that. That being said, they have held us liable for their mixed design. And currently, we are being -- our funds are being held. And I'm not sure what the right procedure is, and forgive me. I tried to address these issues with my general contractor and with the engineering firm to know avail. We have an underpayment currently in August of $20,278.3. Our estimate is short. We've also been requested to switch suppliers due to unacceptable material. And keep in mind that this material was accepted by textile to be augmentated, of which we've had no hand in. Now, we desired to have a part in the mixed design, but we were specifically told no, which is okay. I mean, that's their prerogative. But on the flip side of that coin, we are being held liable for test breaks and whatever else falls insufficient. And I'm asking you gentlemen to consider paying everything that's on the ground currently and consider that in the works is a change order to do a new supplier, to have a new supplier. And the change order is up to $50,000. And also bear in mind that it will be the same sand as New Boston Concrete has currently been using. From what I understand, Hanson will not be online until the first of the year. And from what I understand, it's imperative that we continue progress on this job. And anyway, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, my gentlemen. John is not here this morning?
Yes, sir.
And we'll contact him and see if we can work this out.
Yes, sir. I appreciate it, Your Honor. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Got the next one. Sign up with Mr. Justice Finkley.
I just stood right here.
That's good. Whatever he's got for justice.
Well, thank you, Judge. Now, I bring note. I've come to speak today on the justice of the peace item of eliminating the justice of the peace. Now, don't get me wrong. I don't bring any credentials here or, of course, a financial ability, but I do know to read figures. I don't have any kind of record of financial ability, but when I've seen this, I looked through the budget. And it looks like the consideration is money in and money out. So, I got to looking at this proposed budget. And so, if we're gonna go by money in, money out on each item, then just for instance, the sheriff department for year-to-date have brought in $146,000. And they own a $3.2 million budget. The public defender brings nothing in, and y'all got him scheduled for half a million dollars. And, you know, so on and so forth. The commissioners, each one of them, according to this, bring in about $150,000, $180,000. And their budget is for maybe a million and a half. But my point is this: if you're gonna have this as the rules go by, let's look at all the services. It's hard to put a price on service.
Sure.
We got 46 deputy sheriffs in Bowie County.
Wow.
And a $3.2 million. So, my point is, you know, let's look at it in a fair manner. If we're gonna pay for service, you know, let's pay for service. According to the young man that just spoke here, I'm also for a contractor. I've watched this a while. My advice to you, sir, if you ever get even, get out of here. Because this project has not been good. This contractor, I don't know him. He's the same contractor that done the job from I-49 streets board, and they ought to replace the concrete. They're cutting concrete out from up here. So, my advice to the commissioners is, instead of trying to cut or take P-CAD, get on them invoices and watch that project out there. Because that's where the money is. That's what -- you're not gonna make anything cutting $15,000, $20,000. But they some money. I'm not very smart. You look at somebody that failed out of Texas County Union College twice. I would've done it three times, but I am smarter than them. I quit. But I do know a little about baseball. I know curveball when I see it. And we have been to those curveballs, okay? I've asked each one of you commissioners and the judge to help this young man here. And I know what he's going through. They got him under the thumb. And get on that project out there and see where the money's going. Thank you, Mike.
Done, Judge. Okay, next we have.
Judge, I would like to speak on the Supreme Court's illegal vote on same-sex marriage. We're very blessed, and I want to read to you what our governor, Lieutenant Governor, and Attorney General have to say. "In the wake of the Supreme Court's unlawful same-sex marriage decision, it is vitally important to ensure the government does not discriminate against anyone for simply believing a marriage between a man and a woman. Thankfully, some elected leaders in Texas, including our governor, Lieutenant Governor, and Attorney General, have taken important steps to protect the religious freedom rights of Texans. Governor Greg Abbott has issued a directive to all state agencies ordering respect for religious freedom. Attorney General Ken Paxton, at the request of Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick, has also issued an AG opinion clarifying that county clerks, justices of the peace, and judges still retain religious freedom. Freedom that allows accommodation of their religious objections to issuing same-sex marriage license." Now, I'd like to read what God's Word, the Scripture says. I'm sorry, it's in my [inaudible]. But it's very thick. Thick. So. In Leviticus, that God made man and woman, told them to marry multiple lives, be fruitful, and replenish the earth. And, Judge, commissioners, everybody, we need to do all that we can to keep this curse, to get it out of our nation and our county. And remember the Scripture on our pray yard sign. Second Chronicles, I believe, 7:14 says, "If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven; I will heal their life." God bless America, and God bless all of us.
Thank you. Commissioners, have any comments? I'm going to order her to throw the comments. Any comments? Okay. We move on to item number three. Consider take action for possible reduction in JP courts in Bowie County. Talk about this in the Constitution. We have this one. Paribith Bass, and Bass, Allison Bass, and McGee, her dad started this, and then he gave him a knee last about week and a half ago. I told him to be able to travel anywhere, but he had other thoughts. I guess he started hurting again.
Yeah.
So, he's saying somebody got better.
All right. I have a proposed order, and then I have a packet for all the commissioners, and then I have a packet for everybody who cares for us. We want to look along.
You should give that to the committee. Kind of the reason behind this is that Bowie County has seven JPs. That's compared to bigger counties or other counties our size. Tarr County has two, four, and have four.
You can have eight in any county over $30,000. Not many have that many, because Bowie County has one of the most numbers of JPs in this county that have a similar size.
But the reason for this is two for one is that when you end up costing the court and the constable, both of those positions are like, it's $95,000, a little over $95,000 what the cost is. And we're already showing a deficit for next year. And we're just looking for ways we could cut without, and to take care of the services of our citizens. So, Paribith, would you like to?
Sure. As the judge says, my name is Paribith Bass, and I'm an associate attorney of Allison Bass and Associates. We are the general counsel for the Texas County Judges and Commissioners Association, but also the litigation specialist for the Texas Association of Counties. And we helped Bowie County. We provided redistricting services for them in 2010. These JP precincts were based on that work that we did for them in 2010. Bowie County Commissioners' Court contacted our office to help them, consult them on whether it would be a good idea and recommend different JP precincts, realign them. The Constitution gives them broad authority to do so, and that's on Article 5, Section 18 of the Texas Constitution. As the judge said, Precinct 7 is currently vacant, so that was the easiest way to realign and just abolish that precinct and distribute that population amongst the other counties. On the first page, you can see how we divided that. Instead of just moving the entire Precinct 7 into a different precinct, we divided it into three divisions, D1, D2, and D5. And those would move, Division 1 goes to Precinct 1, Division 2 goes to Precinct 2, Division 5 goes to Precinct 5. And under B, C, and D, you can see the breakdown. So, D1, east of FM 560, north of 82, that contains 2,699 people. That would be moved to Precinct 1. Division 2 would be west of FM 560, north of 82, and that consumes 1,514 people. And then D5 is just 188 people that would be moved from Precinct 7 into Precinct 5. When you're realigning the JP precincts, you want to make sure that the voting strength remains the same, that one man gets one vote, that your vote is not going to be weighted differently in a different precinct. You also want to ensure that there's not a significant dilution of the minority population vote. And so, based on these numbers, when we break it down, there's, and you can see these totals of these populations. The new plan would have very minimal consequence to the voting strength, or it would have a very insignificant dilution of the minority vote. The largest change would be seeing increasing point, which would be a decrease of 4% in the minority population vote. But even with that, it's still an inviolable JP precinct to where the minority population could have a likelihood of electing a commissioner, or at least just our JP, just as much as they would have now. So, there is no adverse effect on that change. The second thing you want to look to is access to the courts. You want to keep those services the same and make sure that you're not losing that. So, you have these long sheets have your access to the justice of the peace courts. This has the case filings. We take the two next large for counties, which are Tom Green and Hoffman, as well as for two next smaller counties, which are Big Florida and Angelina. And as you can see, Bowie County is pretty much average with all that. Sometimes it has a lot less active cases, sometimes it has more, but for the most part is city average. So, when we split it up, you can see on the next page, this is even civil cases, criminal cases, total cases. You have a key map. The Bowie counties are the middle, but when you, you can see Angela only has four precincts. Hoffman has four, Tom Green has four, Victoria has four, where Bowie County has seven. Even if you break it down and you consolidate it, you're going to have, they're going to fit within the average of the other counties. You're not going to have, they're not going to be overloaded with more cases. They're gonna be on average with all the other counties of similar sizes. You're not gonna have a disproportionate effect on the courts. They're not gonna become overloaded. They're gonna just fall right in line with the average of the other counties. The individual courts, that second large page, again, even if you get rid of Precinct 7, the courts that will continue to exist are not going to be overloaded. They'll stay in average with all the other counties. So, the last thing you look at is the budget, which the gentleman heard talk about. And you have those two. It is money in, money out. The JPs currently make more money than they spend. So, what you would really save is $70,598. And that would be the salary of the JP and the constable. And so, you would still, the other JPs that remain are still gonna bring in the same amount of money, because there's gonna be those cases that are going to go into other courts. And that money's still gonna come in. The only thing that you're going to save money on is the salary, so you're not going to have to pay the JP and constable in Precinct 7. So, when you look at all the data that we've put together, then you have no adverse effect on voting strength, you have no adverse effect on caseloads, and you do have a net savings of $70,598 a year. And our recommends that Bowie County abolish Precinct 7, and we distribute that population as reflected in this.
We might believe that does not include the constable, because the constable's salary's in a different budget.
Okay.
That's true. But it did include a staff member that the JP had. That's correct.
Yes.
But the total savings would be $95,123, but cause the constable $95,000 JP budget.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Go ahead. Okay. All of you, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I like that question. You say minority. What defines minority?
As you can see by the tables here, you have the black population, the American Indian population, Asian, Hispanic, Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, other, and multirace. And so, what you're trying to have is over a 30% breakdown, where its minority would be 30%. So, we total all the minorities and add them together to see what the population.
What else constitutes a minority? Women? Women?
No, sir. Women are not counted in that.
Women are not minorities.
Yes, sir.
So, what you tell me, a minority is anything but a white male, right?
No, you're included in it too.
Go ahead. I know what you're talking about.
Any other comments from anybody else?
I mean, I'm sorry I didn't sign up to do whatever you supposed to do.
We're gonna take comments from anybody.
I served as JP Precinct 7.
Yeah, well, man.
14 years. And our justice of peace are different functions, I think, than what you're talking about. The bulk of everything is in Texas County. I understand that. We've got a lot of rural communities. The justice of peace doesn't only do that. They serve as the county coroner in their precinct. And to me, this is very important, because we live out in the rural areas. It takes time to get an ambulance, a funeral home, or something. And you have a loved one there that has passed away. And here you are waiting three or four hours for a JP from somewhere else in the precincts, in the county, to come out there to help you. That's wrong. You need someone that can be there immediately, not in three or four hours. I've seen it. I've been there. I've been in the trenches. I know what I'm talking about. And it's not a money thing, then. It's a compassion, love thing. And we're compassionate, and we love people. We don't want to see, we don't want to see that. And I know they was talking about money in and money out. When I was in office for 14 years, Precinct 7 office was either third or fourth in revenue every year, if we're talking about revenue, which I don't like to talk about revenue when it comes to being compassionate. This is what I'm saying. What if we do save $90,000? We gonna spend it somewhere else? I mean, if our budget is so tight, we need to get somebody out picking up aluminum cans or something. I don't know.
Good idea.
But it is not the place to cut a JP like that. And here we are. We've been without it. You think a man out in the country that gets a citation or gets called to a JP court, and he wears overalls every day, you think he's gonna go down and buy a two-piece suit to go to Baker Court in Texas County? No, he don't want to. He wants to talk to somebody that relates to him. I mean, and I know we have commissioners that on inquest, the sheriff's department goes out, and they fill out their paperwork. And the judge will say, "I just put it down to my desk. I take care of it." No, that's not, we don't go out there just to see that a person is dead. We go out there to figure out the cause of death. This is important. If New Boston, Decatur, Hux, any of the communities, if you have an outstanding number of people dying from blackleg or something, this needs to be reported to Austin. It don't need to be just signed off on and say, "Yeah, they died." You know, we need to do our research. We need to be compassionate people again. We don't need to forget that, what we're serving. We're kinda like the sheriff's department. We're out there to protect and serve also. And I'm not rooting for nobody to be JP there. But we need somebody. And somebody that will go out on these calls and things. And I don't know who you're comparing to these counties. I'm sure your statistics are perfectly correct. But I, you know, to me personally, I don't care about their statistics. I'm worried about Bowie County. That's what we need to worry about, Precinct 7 justice of the peace. In fact, I don't think that's gonna break the bank. Just anybody, put yourself in that position. Thank you. Thank you, Judge. I'm sorry.
Well, man. Anybody else? Any further comments? Don't have to be signed up. Okay. Would you have any questions? Is that your motion to consider reduction JP courts in Bowie County, include the elimination of Precinct 7?
I make a motion, we take action to reduce the number of JP courts in Bowie County from the current number of seven to six. And constable.
Any [inaudible] say?
I'll say.
Most [inaudible] second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any one oppose?
Can I make a comment?
Please.
That's right. I was appointed, after I was elected, I was appointed. I visited with a man I greatly respected, John Carson. And one of the first things he told me was this was something that could be done, and that needed to be done in Bowie County. So, there was another JP that felt like they could get down with this also. So, that's one of the reasons that I don't [inaudible] is that I think that we can still get as good a services as we get now, as we're looking to do now. And what he was saying about the functions of the JPs in the corner, what is happening now, a friend of mine died in a house fire, and it took several hours for a JP to get there. So, there's some things that you can look at both ways, and we look at pluses and minuses. I think the existing JPs and constables will do a good job for Bowie County. If I didn't, I wouldn't vote for it.
Thank you. There's very few times that you can do this, because you can't do it if somebody got elected to a superior position. You have to do it when there's a vacancy there. And maybe tell them when there'll be another, and that's a recent part. Okay. Next item is consider take action to approve the county clerk's archive fee plan for 15 and 16. That was talked about earlier in the topic here. I'm out of number four.
Would you make a motion that we approve the county clerk's archive fee plan for 2015 and 16?
Most [inaudible] said. Second [inaudible] say aye. Any opposed? Here it has been, most have passed. Next item is consider take action to approve contract with the Department of State Health Services at Bowie County Clerk's Office for the Texas Electronic Registration of Police System. Anything you want to make comments on?
This is so we can issue birth certificates for anyone that was born in the state of Texas outside of Bowie County. We signed it last year as just an annual contract that we have to sign with the state so that we can continue to issue those birth certificates.
[inaudible] issue a certificate?
Yes. Yes. I just need permission to sign this contract.
You hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, [inaudible].
Second.
[inaudible] say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passed. Next item is consider take action to approve the district clerk proposed archive fee. So, here opposed, copy approved.
So moved.
Most [inaudible] here second?
Second.
Second, [inaudible] all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? Anyone oppose? Hearing none, motion passed. Next item is consider take action to approve a resolution to support. Next item is consider take action to approve a resolution in support of the Constitution Amendment for increased state funding for transportation. That refers to Prop 7, it's gonna be on the ballot in November. Tom, if it could be put on, placed on the agenda, I very much support it as well. It's a way to raise money for transportation, federal government, some other programs. No new taxes involved in it, no new fees involved, it's allowed more money, that's a $3 billion additional money for transportation in Texas. So I strongly support it, Tom, if you'd like to make a comment.
I pulled this information off of TechTop's webpage concerning Prop 7. I'll just read you if that's okay.
Go ahead.
It just says, "On November the 3rd, 2015, Texas will vote on Prop 7, the Constitution Amendment to dedicate portions of revenue from the state's general sales and use tax, as well as from the motor vehicle sales and rental tax, to the state highway fund for non-toll projects. The amendment will allocate these funds in the following way. Beginning September 2017, that's fiscal year 2018, if the state's sales tax revenue exceeds $28 billion in fiscal, in that fiscal year, the next $2.5 billion of revenue would be directed to the state highway fund. Beginning in September of 2019, which is fiscal year 2020, if the state motor vehicle sales and rental tax revenue exceeds $5 billion in the fiscal year, 35% of the amount in excess of $5 billion would be directed to the state highway fund. In February of 2015, Governor Greg, our governor, named transportation funding one of the five emergency items for the 84th Texas Legislature. To address this issue and take steps toward closing the state's transportation funding gap, the Texas Legislature passed Senate Joint Resolution, which is SJR 5, in May, placing Prop 7 on the ballot for the November 3rd, 2015 election. I'd also go on to say that, if y'all remember, we, the state passed on November 4th, 2014, we passed Prop 1. State overwhelmingly supported it. And guys, this makes a difference here in Buick County, I'll give you some projects that make a difference. It's not just in the big city, big size. But if you'll, we widened, add a center lane right out here in 82, and 98, that's gonna be wide and turner lane, that was, it's not all, but a portion of it's paid by Prop 1. We resurfaced some of the Interstate 30, 20, right around 550 now, which is Richmond Road going into Summer Hill, right in there was paid for. Point two miles, partially paid for. Well, honestly, that was $175,000, $134 was the construction cost, and they paid $176,700 for it. So that was pretty much all paid for. And if anybody from Texas County drove out here on the interstate, if you'll look at the bridge overpass of 2253 there at the Ludluff Drive stop, that too was paid for, a portion by Prop 1 money. And anybody that drove on the middle, they're on the ice at 369 recently. That too, that resurfacing, a new black top there was partially paid for. A portion of it was paid for by Prop 1 money. Well, I say that just to say, this is not just from the big cities, we benefit from that here in Buick County. So. I'm a strong supporter, if you guys wanna talk to me more about it, I'd be happy to talk to you.
Appreciate that. Any other comments from the court? Do I hear a motion, we show us support for Prop 7 on passing this resolution? I'm not good with that, but motion made, vote to approve. Mr. Whit, second?
Second.
Take a back and listen, all in favor will say aye. Any opposed, hearing done, motion passed. Our next item is a resolution requesting resale of properties that are required by the Buick County Empressal District. You gotta tax, tax sale, these payable sale, and the tax, the actual tax sale, so they're asking permission to resell these properties. And they've got benefits on each one of them. Everybody here has an opportunity to make a good part of it. Do I hear a motion to be approved?
If you will.
Do what?
A party, if you will.
That's correct. Motion made by, do you make that motion? By Commissioner Carter, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing done, motion passed. We're gonna wish a good opportunity for our office. Next is consider take action to approve a resolution for Texas Department of Agriculture, Texas Feeding Texas Program. This is a meal program for planning for homebound people and senior citizen people. And we're doing it all over the county, it's been a great program. Gave, cooked over there, cooked over there for years. County's contribution is $30,000, I recommend we approach this resolution.
How much?
$3,000. Our part of it. It feeds 14 million meal demand at the elderly and disabled Texas. Do I hear a motion to continue this program?
I make a motion, we continue the program to take the home-delivered meals to the children.
Do I hear a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Constable Blackwood, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody opposed of feeding the elderly people? Hearing done, motion passed. Next item is consider take action to approve the statewide automated victim notification service maintenance program, this is grant between Officer, the State Attorney General in Buick County. William, do you have any comments?
Like you said, it is a contract between the county and Officer Attorney General. It's a grant that we do annually, whereby there's a vendor that notifies victims of crimes when there's a release of a criminal, or if there's a court date set, the victims are notified, so they will have advance notice of that. The grant is for 12 months, and it's for $16,500, the county does not put up anything. What this money does, it goes to pay the vendor that actually does the notification to the victims.
No cost to the county? Do I hear a motion, that item can be approved?
So moved.
Commissioner Stone, is there a second? Second. Commissioner Whit, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing done, motion passed. Next item deals with a proposed tax abatement to Alcoa for the Nash plant. We, we're in negotiation, we've got Doug Bowers here with us this morning, the City Manager of Nash, Jerry Spurkman, City of Texas County. This is a great deal for us, it's about 90 employees to start with, hopefully it'll grow from there. They're good paying jobs, and we were in competition with another closed Alcoa plant. We're gonna make sure we got those jobs. So we, the county offered a tax abatement for five years for new construction and new expenses. Nash gave a tax abatement, Texas County made several concessions. Jerry, would you like to make a comment?
We'll take it, Mr. Whit.
Okay.
Judge Commissioner, I'm Doug Bowers, the City of Nash. We're offering the same abatement that you are gonna vote on now, a five-year abatement of $5 million for the equipment across the board, five years. And it's just, it's nice to work with Texas County, and the county, and Texas County College, we all work aggressively together, excuse me, in meetings with Alcoa representatives, and it was no feuding, no fighting, it was a very brotherly exchange, and we set out with a goal and have met that goal. So we appreciate your help with that.
And I'll throw in that, in the beginning, this will bring about 3.5 million new dollars in wages to the county. Their wages, their average wage's only about 180% of our current per capita income, plus benefits. And it's a good sign that people wanna come back to our part of the world.
Any questions from the legislature?
This won't affect the taxes that are currently filed, probably if you have the right?
No.
Judge, I make a motion that we approve the five-year tax abatement for Alcoa in Nash.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Make, is there a second? Second. Most of you made a second. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? Hearing done, the motion passed. Jerry, thank y'all.
Thank you. Now, wish us luck, because we both present as nice counties.
Breakfast on us. Next item is consider take action regarding the nomination to the 2016-17 Buick County Empressal Board. The county has, out of a total of 5,000 votes, county has 984 votes. We need to make a nomination from this body, Mr. Ron Ridley, Vincent, Vincent, on there. Representative Buick County, I think she's done a good job, I'd like to see him back. I dare not recommend that we close our 984 votes in favor of that group. Any questions? We don't have, y'all got another name, we can discuss that.
Judge, he's agreed to.
He's out of option, yes, very soon. Do I hear a motion? I make that motion. And we cast our 984 votes for Mr. Ron, as her representative Buick County on the first. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Like, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, the motion passed. Next item is consider take action to approve a flat for Red Bridge subdivision 82. This is precinct four, Mr. Carter.
I was approached by a group with a plan on subdivision, I think all of you have a copy of it. It's gonna be an extremely nice subdivision. In fact, the streets aren't, obviously are not approved with this, or submitted for this, but they're gonna have concrete streets also. So it's gonna be a first-class subdivision. And it's located right off Highway 67, just west of 2148. There's a small subdivision there already, this was just west of it before you get Chayton Road. And this same group, I told, has just purchased it right at 900 acres, across the highway from this on 67. They're playing, they own the Hotheys Grocery, they own that Scotty's Grill, they own about everything from 2148 to 2148. And they're, they want the western part of Buick County to start growing. I guess it's more central. But it's gonna be a nice subdivision. Anyone has any questions? Nice lake, beautiful lake.
I'm just glad to see people developing, are developing.
Yeah, a lot of taxpayers.
Mike, is this all single family, or will they be a part?
It's all single family. And it don't have provisions of, it don't have, subdivision will have governments. It'll be closer watch, closer, they want this to be a nice one.
Will it be gated?
Yes, I would call this, the plans gated.
Will this be, will this be phase one, or phase two?
Well, this is basically, I guess you could call it maybe phase two, the first part, but it's not connected to the existence of. So, yeah, it's standalone.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the flat for Red Bridge subdivision?
I make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Carter, is there a second?
I'll say.
Second by Commissioner Blackwood, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All in favor will say no. Hearing done, it's approved. Next item, budget adjustments amendments.
I have provided line item adjustments to all the commissioners, I've reviewed them. There's quite a few of them that's not unusual for this time of year, we're less than a month away from the year end. We'll do these, and then I probably won't do any more until actually close the fiscal year. There'll be accruals that we'll have to post, and once all this done, I'll make the final adjustments then.
The big one, obviously, is correction considering, that's because addition, made contracts we got. So we didn't anticipate that. First up, I'm pretty much routine.
Most of them, yes, or all of them are.
Any questions?
I make a motion, we approve the budget adjustments.
Motion made by Commissioner Stone, is there a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Whit, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing done, the motion passed. Next item is consider take action to pay the accounts payable. Any questions on that? I will note that, notice that Buick County approved a hit two in Texas County, I think Texas County did all the head one. Embracing here, I want to point that out, and I'll take a committee. Discussion on it. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, we pay the bills.
Motion made by Commissioner Carter, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Next item is consider approve to amend the minutes since last meeting. Any questions for the votes? Corrections, additions, do I hear a be approved? Do I hear a move, we approve?
You gonna need that.
Motion made to approve the minutes since last meeting, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Constable Blackwood, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing done, the motion passed. Next item is consider take action to adopt a resolution in support of increasing the number of federal judges in the Eastern District of Texas. The Eastern District of Texas is growing, and we're not getting, we don't think our proportion of sheriff judges, we've got one here finally after a long, a long time in between. It's a economic generator for the area where you have federal boards. And the, the Dallas District has eight, I think, our Eastern District has like two. I had a question here. But what we're asking for is to support the effort, all the counties in Eastern District of Texas to add additional federal courts. I attended a meeting in Dallas about 30 weeks ago, and that was, what was to talk about was, what we do to work together to get additional courts. So I would recommend we approve the resolution, support that. Any questions?
Is there any plans in the legislature to do?
Not till the dialogue starts. Guess words gotta start.
If we wait for maybe 2018 or something, create another federal judge.
Okay, any other, any other comments? All in favor supporting resolution support? Do we already have a motion?
No, we don't.
I make a motion, I would support the increase in the number of federal judges in the Eastern Division of Texas.
Question made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All in favor will say no. Hearing done, the motion passed. Any questions?
I have one comment, before y'all make the motion to adjourn, commissioners, please don't leave, I have one law for y'all to sign. Make your motion.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn? So moved. Motion made, and second, all in favor will say aye. All in favor will say no.